Thank you. Councilmember Alfs.
Here.
Councilmember Richards.
Here.
Councilmember Derwin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wernickeoff.
Here.
Mayor Hughes.
Here, we're all here tonight. Okay, brings us to my item two, report out of closed session from our previous council meeting, Kara.
Yes, thank you. Kara Silverton, attorney. At the last town council meeting, which occurred on April 27th, 2022, the town council conducted two closed sessions. The first closed session involved the performance review of the town manager. And the second closed session involved some anticipated litigation. And there's no reportable action coming from either of those sessions.
Okay, thank you. Is there any comments on this item? Any public comments on item two? Seeing none, we will move on to oral communications. This is an opportunity in the meeting for members of the public to address council on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. If any member of the public would like to do so, please raise your hands now. I'm not seeing any hands raised. So we will go on to item four, presentation from the Resource Conservation District. Jeremy, are you introducing this item?
Yeah, very briefly, and Melvin, if you could move Kellex over to a panelist, thank you.
Oh, sorry, Jeremy, before you go on, I did see a hand get raised. Karen had her hand up briefly. It's gone up again. So I will reopen public comments back.
And Melvin, sorry to keep asking. I don't have a permission to allow Karen to speak. So you can either make me a co-host or if you want to do that at your end.
Hi, I just had a bit of a public service announcement along with a critical comment about town communication. Today I attended the Geological Safety Committee only to find out in a side comment that the wildfire section of the safety element will be reviewed next Tuesday at 4:00 PM in the emergency prep meeting. I thought this is really important to make a note of because as everybody knows wildfire is a key, key concern. And that that this will be unfortunately in the emergency prep meeting and not the wildfire committee meeting. And in the last seven months, eight members, including myself, have left the wildfire committee due to a set of unfortunate circumstances. So I would, I just request that whenever the wildfire subject comes up, that it's really clearly written in the communications. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Yes, we have been having trouble getting a forum for the wildfire committee meeting. They would have looked at this item, but because they can't form a forum right now, they're not able to do so. I can say that we've got a couple of applications though, so hopefully we'll be able to appoint some members and restore the forums that could be shortly. Okay, seeing no other hands, we'll go back to item four then, Jeremy.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we're joined by Kellex Nelson, who is the executive director of the San Mateo County Resource Conservation District. The council's had an opportunity to hear from Kellex and her colleagues in the past about what the RCD does in San Mateo County, as well as the sphere of influence change that allows them to now operate in Portola Valley and provide a suite of services. Kellex contacted me a few weeks ago, asking for an opportunity to address the council on the ongoing sphere of influence changeover, if you will, and I'm happy to turn it over to Kellex. Kellex, good to see you tonight.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. I am going to share some slides, if I may, I'm going to give that a shot. And how's that working? Can you see my screen? Great, great, thank you. So yeah, I did have the opportunity to talk with you once before. And wanted to come back tonight just to make sure that I was sharing out information about some proposed changes to our boundaries. And, and so I'm going to briefly go through some slides in the beginning. That's just a reminder of what the RCD or Resource Conservation District is. And then a little bit about those proposed changes to our boundaries and how that might affect you. So the Resource Conservation District or RCD is a special district that was formed in 1939, basically to help people help the land. We're an independent special district in San Mateo County, not part of county government. But we do ask the county to appoint our, our directors. There are about 100 RCDs in California, thousands more nationwide. And in California, conservation districts are created in the state's Public Resources Code. And we are able to provide very diverse services across jurisdictions, across public and private lands to accomplish on the ground environmental protection at a regional scale. And we are the, we share our mission with the federal agency, the USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service, which is hosted by, leveraged by the RCD in San Mateo County. So we were created, as I mentioned, by the state of California for the explicit purpose of helping our communities by helping the land in very diverse ways that we do that. Technical assistance, education, outreach, project design, implementation, financial assistance, all sorts of things that enable us to serve as a local hub for conservation, connecting people with the technical, financial and educational assistance that they need to conserve and manage natural resources. So when when we do this work, there's, the RCDs were essentially designed in statute to evolve with the changing and emergent needs of both people and the environment. In recent years, that has enabled us to bring resources and solutions for flooding, drought, fire, climate change. And we provide comprehensive, integrated services that address a diverse array of community needs and priorities in these key focal areas, based on the feedback that we've gotten from our constituents. Having to do with water quality, water conservation, water availability, drought resilience, climate change, climate mitigation, protecting and enhancing habitat for endangered species, helping to ensure viable local agriculture, and most recently, we are working on thousands of acres of forest land to reduce the risk of catastrophic wildfire and to improve forest health. So some examples of what that looks like on the ground as we have addressed the annual mortality events of endangered and threatened fish in Pescadero Marsh and address the flooding, the regular flooding that in the only road into town through a dredge project that restored migration for endangered salmon and beneficially reused the sediment on site. We have done, as I mentioned, we have completed or in progress thousands of acres of forest health and forest management projects. Many that reduce the fuel load at the wildland urban interface. And also unfortunately, we were called upon to provide post-fire recovery after the catastrophic fires of the CZU complex, lightning complex fires in August of 2020. With events like this massive catastrophic erosion that happened overnight, we were able to work with partners across property lines to to restore that, that piece of land. We also do a lot to prevent that kind of work, often along creeks or riparian areas. We do a great deal to restore habitat for endangered and threatened species, including reintroduction of more than 10,000 endangered salmon into local watersheds. And work with the San Francisco garter snake, California red-legged frog, steelhead trout, marbled marlet, you, you name it. And as I mentioned before, part of our, our efforts are around local agricultural viability. We were formed by farmers in the 30s. And with many partners, we also work to draw greenhouse gases down from the atmosphere and store them in healthy soils and vegetation to reverse climate change, mitigate climate change, not just reduce emissions or build resilience, but to actually reverse climate change. Typically on working agricultural and timber related lands. Some of this work, just 14 of these carbon farm plans that we've completed. Sorry, that's what this picture is. This is a carbon farm plan we did on Tomcat Ranch in Pescadero. It's a very site-specific prescriptions to be able to mitigate climate change on a working land. And the 14 plans that we've completed so far in San Mateo County as, as implemented would be the equivalent of the amount of carbon sequestered in over 2,000 acres of forests per year or taking 400 plus cars off the road. It's really extraordinary that what can be done with this natural resource management. We work with, you know, everything from cemeteries to greenhouse operations to campgrounds to private landowners to municipalities on award-winning projects that build resilience in these communities. With the Harbor District identifying sources of water pollution with individual landowners in the county. With property owners, residential property owners on storing and managing stormwater and, and manure and runoff and erosion. And bringing people together, whether it's the top left, it's farm workers on sort of watershed literacy forums on the utilization of roundup and what happens in our environment. The center bottom photo is working with contractors on best practices in forests. Bottom left is university students, top centers, bringing together ranchers, regulators and environmentalists. So a lot of our work is about, again, we help people help the land. So a lot of our work brings people together. And then across the landscape, put all this together, reducing flooding, protecting water supply, reducing risk of fire, sequestering carbon, restoring habitat, reducing erosion, improving water quality, improving agricultural viability, bring it all together. And really it's about community and landscape resiliency. So RCDs were formed to be adaptive to community priorities, intended to integrate diverse goals and values into environmental protection, including public safety, economic interests, equity interests. We can work across jurisdictions, across public and private lands and are generally seen as a neutral party that works where we're invited on a voluntary basis. So that's the background again about what RCDs are, what San Mateo RCD does. And then our proposed boundary change is intended to better represent our district services and benefits. This map on the right shows you the yellow area is our current boundary. And then the green areas are those that are proposed for inclusion. And that's for a number of reasons. One is to better represent our actual services and benefits as well as our anticipated services and benefits. It is to be consistent with the sphere of influence that LAFCO adopted. So LAFCO already adopted a sphere of influence that are these boundaries. This better enables us to bring services at an appropriate scale to address some of the effects of climate change or wildfire or species extinction or flooding or water pollution. It is definitely a desire to be contiguous and not divide communities as our current boundaries do. And also to be consistent with changes in statute. When conservation districts were first formed in the 1930s, we were largely farm service agencies. We were called Soil Conservation, the Soil Conservation District. And then in the 70s, the state's Public Resources Code that enables us was updated. It changed us from Soil Conservation Districts to Resource Conservation Districts and broadened our authorities to all aspects of natural resource management. And so the areas that have been excluded before, particularly those, all those doughnut holes were before we were thinking about things like watershed health and how the developed landscape, the human-built landscape fits into natural resource management and that sort of thing. So just as, as an example of this, this is just an example of the blue dots are RCD projects in recent years, solely those that have been outside of our boundaries. So in the statute that enables us, we can work outside our boundaries, but it's harder to bring resources to them, et cetera. But as you can see, we have actually done a lot of work and brought a lot of services and benefits outside of our boundaries. And our current boundaries, parts of Portola Valley are in it, and parts of Portola Valley are not. The Cortez-Knox-Hertzberg Local Government Reorganization Act of, of 2000 encourages that boundaries should avoid dividing an otherwise homogeneous area and that boundaries should reasonably include all territory which would reasonably benefit from the agency services. And I think that's part of what LAFCO was recognizing when it changed our sphere of influence. Our current boundaries do not include all the territory that really that benefits. And it excludes parts of some communities, like parts of Pacific and parts of Pescadero, while other parts are wholly within our district boundaries. So we intend to apply for a change of organization to redefine our boundaries to be consistent with our sphere of influence. And then some of the questions that have come up. Would this result in any new requirements for property owners, for residents, for businesses or others? No. Would this result in any new restrictions on property owners, residents, businesses or any others? No. Would this result in any new fees or taxes? No. So the RCD works where we are invited. We work with people on a voluntary basis and we typically bring grant funding or other resources to do that. A little bit about how our services are funded. We leverage a very small property tax base. We get about $70,000 a year. And our budget this year is about $12 million. So we leverage that small property tax base to bring very diverse public and private funds from grants, inter-agency agreements, contracts for services, donations, et cetera. And you can see the leverage that that, those property taxes have brought in the most recent fiscal year that we, for which we completed this analysis, for every dollar of property taxes received, it leveraged $149 for our constituents. And this gives you a sense of the funding for our services. The blue is state funding. So we are bringing millions of dollars of state grant funds into San Mateo County. The, the orange is federal funds. The yellow is non-county local funds. And then the, the, the gray is the county, is county funds. There's a small sliver of light blue that sometimes we will help with mitigation for PG&E or Caltrans work. And then some other sources. It says participants can now see my application. Were you not able to before?
I've been able to see mine.
Okay, thanks. And, and we are a very, we operate on a very slim margin. We do not have, we have one admin and one executive director. We, even though we're grant dependent, we don't have any development officer, no grants administrator, no communication staff, no public information staff. Almost all of the dollars coming to the RCD go straight out to direct services, about 92 or 93% on average. So we are not an administratively heavy organization. So that was just the sort of overview of what we are and what we're thinking about, doing what we're applying to do right now. We just wanted to come share that with you and see if you had any questions or, or thoughts about that. If anybody wants to do a screenshot or take a photo of this, if you want to know what we're up to, again, we don't have communication staff, but we do our best. That's our website. There are some really good videos that we post often when we're out in the field. We just post brief very rough cut videos on YouTube and some of our other social media. And with that, I will stop the share and see if you had any thoughts or questions for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any council member questions?
Okay, this is really going to make me sound stupid, but so how does this affect Portola Valley?
Who's asking that? I can't see. Mary Ann. There you are. I see you. It says that your name is Historic Schoolhouse, so I was confused. So how does it affect Portola Valley? It includes more of Portola Valley and, and it better enables us to be able to bring resources and services. And it's also, first of all, primarily, it's just a correction and update. It's just making sure that our boundaries reflect our actual work. And so to that extent, that piece of it doesn't necessarily bring any huge benefits and it's also doesn't have any negative attributes. But having these, having the boundaries, having the areas that we serve in our boundaries better enables us to take opportunities of funding and be able to bring funding. It better enables us to prioritize work in areas that are within our boundaries to bring our services or resources. It also is a deeper bench for us to be able to recruit directors. The idea of conservation districts is that boards of directors are supposed to be of people resident within your district. And so the, these are supposed to be people who really have skin in the game, who provide local direction. It's supposed to be the best form of local government and have that, that sort of thing. So I think that making it easier for us to get directors from the areas that we serve is another benefit. Those are, those are primarily what comes to mind.
Well, that sounds good. Thank you.
Sure.
Yes.
I'm just curious. It's Sarah. I'm here in, in the room. Has there been any critical pushback of changing the boundaries? If there's a downside, what has it been perceived to be? And you're shaking your head, so I guess none, but I was just curious.
Yeah, I haven't heard any. We, we've filed CEQA, got no comments. I've been talking about this in various fora for a while. I haven't heard anything negative about it yet. I mean, the, the negative things I've heard is people's fears. Well, wait a minute, is this going to restrict my ability to develop? If this, if I'm, if I'm in a resource conservation district, can I not do my addition on my house? Is this going to be more fees? You know, the, the concerns that I've heard are not, are about what people want to know if things could happen to them. And so far, none of the things that have been brought to my attention are things that would happen. Yeah.
I have a, oh, yes, go ahead.
Thanks. I just wanted, does, for this application, does this require any kind of like support? Like, do we, do we need to do anything like in terms of a letter or something to support your, your application or?
No, thank you for asking that. No, it doesn't require that. We are, you know, we've finished, we've gone through the sphere of influence process that was a very clear signal of the expectation of applying for a boundary change. We do that through the state board of equalization. It does not require any letters of support. You know, we did need to do CEQA. Well, do we need to? Well, we did do CEQA for it, which would also be an opportunity to see if anybody was concerned. There's not, there's no requirement for that. I, I don't know that it would make a difference.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
I, I'm just curious why the boundary cuts off at what looks like 280 or thereabouts and didn't, why, why do you not go all the way down to the bay and cover the whole county?
Yeah. That's so funny. I took that question out of my frequently asked question slide because it didn't have a tidy no. So I was like, I don't know how this fits. So I'm glad you asked that question. RCDs are typically largely rural. That's sort of our brand. I mean, we often have cities within our boundaries, but the bay side is, is largely urban. Once you get down to the flatter areas. And we've definitely had that conversation, but there are some, there are some different sets of needs there. And there's a lot more resources with the cities for the kinds of natural resource protection that they want to do. There are fewer of those resources in the more natural and yeah, the more rural areas. That's, that's largely it. It also would have just been a bigger push. We're much more known on the west side than we are in the cities. And I'm not sure yet. There are some things that we do on the city side, but I don't know that it's enough of our work and I don't know at this point that we are, would be adding enough unique value, whereas in these more rural areas, we certainly do.
Thanks. Okay, let me see if there's any public comment on this item. There any public comment? A hand up from Rita. Go ahead, Rita.
Yes, um, thank you for your presentation. And I'm just wondering, as a resident, what can your organization do to help the residents? I understand what you can help the, the town, but what can you do to help the residents? If they have a question about a build, if they have a question about an area in town that's, it's going to be built or something that they see and they have a question, you know, they just trying to figure things out. Who, who do you represent? Can the residents contact you?
Yes, so we're not going to add a whole lot of value about development. We don't really engage around that. We never take advocacy positions or that sort of thing. What we're really good at is providing technical assistance. And so residents reach out to us about things like the banks of the creek are eroding or how do I manage the manure from my horses or manage dust or water quality? The kinds of things that, that landowners reach out to us about all the time have to do with vegetation management. If, so often people want to plant native plants or manage erosion, all sorts of things like that, stormwater management in our different program areas. And so we'll work often with community groups. So like, you know, maybe a group of folks along Grandview and Woodside, you know, or or in Loma Mar or that sort of thing. So often a neighborhood will contact us, sometimes individual landowners. And then in terms of our ability to then meet your need, that depends on whether we have the expertise and the resources to do it. So if you asked us to do something that we don't have funding to do, or we don't have staffing to do, we would most likely try to connect you to, we know a lot of people in this space and we try to connect you to somebody who can provide that support.
Oh, thank you. That's really helpful. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Rita. And then next looks like phone number ending in 7562. I guess Carolyn. Right, Carolyn.
Good evening. Thank you for the presentation. Unfortunately, for some reason, it was black for the longest time until that question was raised and then you showed up. So unfortunately I did miss the boundaries. Town council and staff often uses the word influence, the sphere of influence. And I'm wondering if that interferes with the boundaries that they act on the sphere of influence compared to your sphere of influence. If you would be able to clarify that, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. So LAFCO, the Local Areas Formation Commission basically is, there's, there's LAFCO in each county in California and they basically have the they're, they're to assure good government, good local government in, in some fashion. And part of that is by identifying what are appropriate boundaries or responsibilities of a particular entity. And so each of these forms of local government has a sphere of influence typically, which are the same as their boundaries. And so what might be the sphere of influence for your town is where your town's boundaries and responsibilities and services would exist. Our conservation district might have a sphere of influence that's also in your town, but we do a different job. That's where our influence is. That's where our services are. Does that answer your question?
Carolyn, are you still there? Oh, she's on mute.
I'm sorry. I thought I had muted myself earlier. Well, it would be great if you could leave the map and if the, if town staff could, could, could put that on the website since I missed that part. So it would be helpful to understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Kellex, I think if you could share your presentation with Jeremy, then we can stick it on our website with our materials. Thank you. I see no more hands up from the public. So Kellex, thank you for your presentation. Very informative and good to see you again.
For having me. Bye.
Bye, good night. Okay, that brings us on to item five, the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are addressed as one item generally. Together, we take one vote unless a council member wishes to pull an item from the agenda. Members of the public may comment on any item on the agenda. And if you would like to comment on any of the items on tonight's consent agenda, please raise your hand now. And I see Rita's hand up.
Yes, thank you. For the approval of the minutes, the minutes say April 27th, 2022, but the minutes that are attached are for April 13th. Maybe it's just on all of my computers and devices and somebody else is seeing something different. But I am seeing But I am seeing the minutes for April thirteenth, and they are incomplete minutes for April thirteenth. Actually, on page eleven, it says Mayor Derwin and twenty twenty one. So am I the only one that sees that or is?
That there do seem to be some issues with the minutes, yes.
Okay, thank you. It's not just all of my devices. Yeah, so I I have a question about that particular item because I do not see the minutes for April twenty seventh, twenty twenty two.
Thank you. And I see Carolyn's hand is up.
Thank you very much. I was going to make the same comment. Thank you, Rita, for looking at. Listen, we spent a lot of time and making ourselves available to give constructors criticism or comments and share our concerns to find resolution. Again, those minutes are, well, I'm not going to spend time correcting them. But if, for instance, in the first paragraph, my my statement was December two thousand eighteen, that was incorrect. I believe I said December eighteenth. All the way on the bottom, it it to the whole statements that I made, it's just that I did not understand. And then at the very last, at the bottom of the page, it says that I did understand. No, I did not understand, and I still have not gotten a reasonable answer why our public comments are not being posted and shared with the public. We want to solve many issues in this town because there's no cooperation, collaboration with the town staff. I'm sorry, it, you know, you only create frustration. This is not the way to go. And once again, the minutes are incorrect, and so we will have to pull them off the agenda. And we will have to, I'm not sending in corrections. This this is ridiculous. So we starting to put statements and we post them before eleven o'clock AM or before noon on Friday, and they're still not posted. So, you know, there has to be a unified system to have proper communication. Why did we never have a problem before? And it's only getting worse and worse. Thank you for taking my comments.
Thank you, Carolyn. I see no more hands raised from the public. So do we have a member of the council who wish to pull an item from?
The minutes.
Okay.
Because they just seem to feel a bit of a problem.
Anything else? Okay, is there a motion then on items five, B, C, D, and E?
So move.
Moved by Sarah, seconded by Jeff. Jeremy, can you call the roll, please?
That's a member else.
Hi.
That's a member Richards.
Hi.
Councilmember Derwin.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wernikoff.
Yes.
And Mayor Hughes.
Hi. Okay, the minutes. Yeah, I was having a little bit of trouble parsing them, partly I think because it's a little bit of a new format for us. And then partly, I think there may have been some copy and paste errors, and I wasn't sure if the minutes were indeed for the twenty seventh or whether they were the ones from the thirteenth. And I didn't have time to kind of go through them in detail. So does anybody else read through them in detail?
I, my sense is they are not definitely not from the twenty seventh. So I think they just need to go back and be redone. I think there was just some sort of error.
Yeah, so I I know that.
The majority of this, I think, is from.
We have a new clerk. She's been out. She has COVID. We've had Carrie covering. There's been some chaos and confusion. So maybe that the wrong minutes just got attached to the packet.
That's what it seems like to me.
We'll bring it back for the next meeting, Mayor Hughes.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, we are on to our regular agenda, item six, which is a, I guess, six A, a public hearing recommendation from the town attorney for adoption of resolution approving an amendment to the town manager's employment agreement. Kara.
Yes, thank you. So the council has a resolution before it approving some amendments to the town manager's employment agreement. This comes up every couple of years. And the Brown Act requires that before approving these types of compensation amendments involving the town manager's employment agreement, that any compensation amendments be summarized and put on the record before the council votes on them. And this was a new Brown Act regulation that was an outgrowth of the City of Bell scandal a number of years ago. So that's why we have been agendizing these for action where typically we would put these types of contracts on consent. So there are several amendments that I'd like to summarize. The first is the salary. So the town manager's salary in this amendment has been increased from two hundred and twenty four thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars a year to two hundred and forty one thousand, five hundred and sixty six a year. This represents a five point two percent cost of living adjustment and a two point three performance increase. The second amendment is an increase of one additional week of vacation. So the contract now provides for four weeks of vacation time. And then the final amendment involves a one time, a ten thousand dollar bonus based on the town manager's retention of town personnel and continuity of operations during COVID nineteen. And this amount is not personable. And it will be paid with the CARES Act funds that the town received in connection with the COVID nineteen Recovery Act. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. So are there any council questions? Before we go for public comment? Yes, Miranda.
Can you just remind me when does this go into effect?
Yes. So the new, the compensation effect increase goes into effect July one in connection with the the new upcoming budget. And the the new term of the agreement will be an additional two years. So it will expire on July first, twenty twenty four.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, then I will open for public comments. And it looks like first is Karen. Go ahead, Karen.
Good evening. Thank you. I was wondering, I think I just heard, was it one thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars?
It's very hard to make out why. Carolyn, it's very hard to hear you. Your your voice coming through very kind of garbly, muffled almost.
I have four bars right now.
That's a little better now.
Okay, so I was wondering if I misheard if it was a thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars as an extra bonus for COVID.
We're we're taking comments and then we'll we'll collect them all and reply after all your comments have been made.
Okay, so then my second question is, three years in a row, I have asked, you know, or have commented and have asked to improve the services because honestly, I don't see any services delivered by town manager. You you do have the, I don't have the specifics of his particular contract, but we do have what the duties and obligations are. And I find this kind of, I question it because why would you give a manager an increase if there's so many people who are questioning the performance of duty? The administration itself, the attorney, and then also, you know, the qualifications. There is supposed to be knowledge on the law, and often we don't get an update on this. I mean, there's so many issues that we have addressed. And instead of seeing any improvement, like I said, it only seems to get worse. So if some council could substantiate the reason for amending the contract and for giving the manager a raise, I would appreciate that because I don't see how you would actually propose that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next hand is Rita.
Yes, I would like to read something about the CARES Act money. The CARES Act requires that the payments from the contra virus relief fund only be used to cover expenses that, one, are necessarily expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to the contra virus disease two thousand nineteen, COVID nineteen, two, were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March twenty seventh, twenty twenty, the date of enactment of the CARES Act for the state or government. And, three, were incurred during the period that begins on March first, twenty twenty and ends on December thirty first, twenty twenty one. Being that this is being done now past that date and that there are other needs in town associated with this, my concern is funds being used this way from the CARES Act. And just wanted to state what the, you know, what the state, what the treasurer, federal treasurer says that the funds are supposed to be used for. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? I don't see any more hands. Okay, Kara, could you address? I think there were two questions, one, one question, one for general statement. I heard that maybe you could address. One was what the amount of the bonus is. And then the other is whether, maybe you could just address whether the CARES Act would impact cover this.
Sure. Yeah, thank you for this question. So the one time bonus is ten thousand dollars. If if I misspoke and said it was one thousand, I apologize. It's ten thousand dollars. And the CARES Act does allow these types of bonuses to be paid retroactively for work performed during the COVID nineteen emergency. There have been other bonuses that have been given to other personnel who went above and beyond during the COVID nineteen emergency. And we did verify that the funds could be used for the for a bonus in connection with the town manager and that that bonus could be paid retroactively for the time worked during the COVID nineteen emergency.
Thank you. Okay, so seeing no more hands raised, I will bring it back to the council then for discussion or comments. Anybody like to go first? Jeff.
Thanks. Yeah, I will just say in response to those comments that, yes, the use of CARES Act fundings for for a bonus of this nature is is appropriate. And frankly, it is entirely, it is entirely called for. Having been mayor during that that period and having worked with Jeremy and having spent hours on the phone with him nearly every day through that period, I cannot tell you how much work he put in and the effort he put forth and kept our, kept the town on track. And we have lost no staff over the course of the of the pandemic, which is simply phenomenal. So I will, yes, we we have rewarded him with a with a modified contract and a bonus. And I stand by the decisions that we as a council made on both of those things, all those things.
Thank you, Jeff. Here I am.
I was also a mayor during COVID, and I echo what Jeff said and agree with him a hundred percent. And we spent a very long time on Jeremy's evaluation. I think it was probably one of the more robust discussions we've had with the town manager. I mean, we, we went through all that he's doing great, the areas where he can improve. But overall, we're very happy. I stand by the package as well.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank my fellow council members for doing a great job. I I think the packages that you put together is absolutely right on the amount of work that Jeremy's done over the last couple of years in response to all of the challenges we've had has been above and beyond. And I stand absolutely support the proposed package.
Thank you.
And the only thing I wanted to add to is that, you know, as part of the the assessment of the compensation package, there was a thorough evaluation and comparison countywide of packages and salaries and whatnot of our town manager rather relative to other communities, looking at population size and all of that. And so part of this is to bring Jeremy, you know, up to par, frankly, with compensation packages that are in other communities.
Yeah, I just, you know, I, a lot of what we what we do in reviewing the town manager performance is done in closed session. And that's how how these things are expected to be treated under California state law. But there is a robust process that is very similar to what I'm used to from private industry in terms of reviewing senior executives, where we have targets, performance goals, review of how well he's done. We do a three hundred and sixty eval where his staff members and his peers provide input on how they view his performance. As Sarah pointed out, we look at comparables for what other town managers, not just in the county, but in similar cities around, you know, in the whole Bay Area essentially are are getting paid for the work that they're doing. And then we, you know, try and compare that to what's going on in Port Tal Valley, and we're a different town than everybody else. So there's, there's a whole lot that's going into this. But overall, through that process that we've been working on for the last month or so, I am fully supportive of this, of where we've come out. I think Jeremy's performance has been exceptional, I would say, through the COVID period, and the bonus reflects that. And the work that he's been doing in managing town staff through the difficulty of of everything that's been going on the last couple of years has been remarkable, especially when you compare it to the work of the work that's been going on in in other towns that are similar to ours. We have been exceptionally lucky, and I think that, you know, this adjustment to the contract reflects our our trust in Jeremy and and the work that he's been doing. Okay, if there's no other comment, I would entertain a motion on this item. Here I am.
I'm happy to move that we, what is the correct language?
Move revolution adopting.
Approve the resolution. Adopt the resolution approving amendment number six to town manager employment agreement.
Okay, there are second.
I will, I will second.
Sarah and Jeff both second.
I'll third.
Yeah. Jeremy, roll call, please.
Also, member else.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Councilmember Derwin.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wernikoff.
Yes.
Mayor Hughes.
Hi. Okay, that brings us then to item six B, an update on the green building ordinance. Brandon.
Good evening. Just give me one moment to properly share my screen here. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and members of the town council. I'm here tonight to give an update on the status of the town's green board building ordinance as well as seek input from the council on a path forward. And this is just a quick presentation or overview of the presentation. I'm going to review the the current status of the green building ordinance, review what our current green building ordinance is, review the previous direction from the council on the ordinance update, review staff assessment of the ordinance update and some possibilities and impediments. Review staff assessment of the ordinance update and some possibilities and impediments. Um, give staff recommendations on a path forward on the ordinance update and look at additional areas for um, for their study as well as a plan and proposed timeline. Um, as you may know, the new building code goes into effect on January first, twenty twenty three. The building code is updated on a triannual cycle, so it's updated every three years. Um, in addition to looking at the green building ordinance, the town is going to needs to adopt the new building code as and is also looking at adopting an update to the home hardening. Um, any updates to the green building ordinance require sixty days of need sixty days need to be submitted to the C E C for approval sixty days prior to January first if we want those to be in effect on January first. Um, in reviewing all of these, this current status of all of these um, ordinances, staff decided that it made sense to update the green building ordinance to align with the other code adoptions on January first. So as you um, may remember, our current green building ordinance relies on build it greens, green point rated checklist with additional requirements for E V readiness, solar P V and thermal readiness, gray water readiness and a reduction in potable water within with a certain amount of turf. This is a a quick review of the project types and the thresholds that we use for um, the green point rated checklist. And so you can see here on the left, the project types, we have the points required depending on this size, uh, the square footage thresholds and as well as the checklists that are associated with those thresholds. Um, this is a review of the previous direction from the council on an update um, to that green building ordinance. So um, the council had directed staff to pursue ordinance um, that for all electric construction with no exceptions for new residential and multifamily, all electric for new commercial construction, unless they received an exception from the building official for certain cooking needs and all electric for new public agency construction with potential exceptions um, as needed for emergency services. In addition, the council directed staff that all new construction should be E V ready and so that a charging station can simply be plugged in. And then in addition, you'll see highlighted in orange, continuing use, continue using the green point rated system and eliminate that requirement um, to complete the checklist for small additions or remodeled projects under four hundred square feet. So in, in looking at the um, full landscape of the the code adoption and the other ordinance that needed to be implemented, staff concluded again that it was best to update the ordinance to align with those other core adoptions. With the alignment of the ordinance update with that building code cycle, staff took the opportunity to review past impediments to updating the ordinance. What we discovered was that the biggest impediment to the timely update to the ordinance was the reliance on the build it green, green point rated checklist. Every code cycle, the checklist, build it green has to update the checklist checklist in response to the code cycle. And then staff needed to analyze the updates to the checklist, not only against the building code, but against the ordinance. And then any major changes to the checklist or the point system will require an analysis of the point and square footage threshold thresholds required for each project type. In addition, over the years, build it green support has waned um, since the original adoption of the town's green building ordinance. So when we would reach out to them to get help in understanding the different implications of the measures on the checklist and how it would impact our ordinance, it was difficult to to get that information. In addition, we heard from planning and building staff that use of the checklist was confusing to applicants because the town was one of the only municipals municipalities still using it. So staff met with the planning and building department, um, multiple staff members, the building inspector, the planning manager, um, Carol, who is implements the the green building ordinance, you know, at the at the counter to discuss and explore the possibility of eliminating the town's reliance on building, on the build it green, green point rated checklist going forward. In addition with um, so staff was amenable to this. And we also looked at, as the council directed us to move forward with electrification and the town has these additional requirements for E V solar and gray water readiness, we would likely be able to achieve these equivalent benefits using the state's mandatory code with potentially tier one and tier two measures over it. Oops. So with with this landscape and with that assessment of where the impediments and the opportunities in our next update to the green building ordinance, we're recommending that the town consider ending its reliance on the build it green, green point rated system. Um, with that, reviewing the Cal Green tier one and tier two measures and seeing what opportunities they have and recommending levels of enforcement for each project type. In addition, so that we even sure that we still um, achieve the equivalent level of environmental provisions within the ordinance, we would extend the third party verification that we already have within the ordinance to the Calgary measures for all building types. And this is similar to how with the green point rated system, it requires a green point raider to verify those measures. In this case, a third, someone who was knowledgeable of the Calgary measures could verify those measures that were existed in Calgary, not only the mandatory measures, but whatever tier one or tier two measures were adopted. Um, we would use the um, reach code model language for the all electric requirements that have been um, used regionally and amend those as necessary for the town's ordinance. And we would look at updating the town's additional requirements as needed to align with the new building code. So again, these, the updates to the existing ordinance, we need to look at the E V charging section to achieve the plug in capability, update the solar readiness requirements and update the gray water readiness. We also need to review the new building code to look at adding um, battery storage and backup with account we had discussed with the update with the council as well as adding a multifamily category, which doesn't currently exist within our green building ordinance. So um, in, we have talked extensively with the planning department and we, we know that the building code should be released in July. And so staff is recommending that we hold a study session with the council in the late summer to review um, the potential updates to the ordinance. And then in the early fall, staff will bring all three of the items to the council for review and adoption. This would include the building code, the home hardening code and the green building ordinance. And then staff will submit the green building ordinance to the C E C for sixty day approval. And the three items that are aligned will go into effect January first. So again, this reviews that timeline. We have been working with the planning director on that timing as there are so many important priorities that are coming to the council in the late fall. And this timeline also allows for the rush of um, applications that usually come in December when applicants want to submit their projects under the old code. And it also allows staff to conduct outreach and prepare handouts and material in advance so that new project applicants are well aware of what's coming. And with that, um, we are looking to the council to provide comments and directions um, and ask any questions.
Okay, thank you, Brandy. Um, are there any questions? Here I am.
Hi, Brandy. It's always so great to see you. Okay, could you be a little more specific? When you say, I understand, update the E V charge readiness, is solar readiness the same thing? It's, it's ready to throw some solar on the roof and hook it in? I have a bunch of questions. Also, what does gray water readiness mean specifically? Add battery storage, does that mean you have to do battery storage? Those are my questions.
So, um, so basically with every time with the, there's an update to the code, um, we need to take the the measures that are already in our ordinance and we need to look and see how the code has normally ratchets up and see what we want to do either to if, you know, align ours as we need to bring it up to meet it or exceed it. And so this is, this is one of the research projects that I will work with the, the building inspector to um, to conduct. And so actually I have this slide as far as E V readiness. Um, I included this slide because it's a little complicated. So in in our current ordinance, we're, we call it E V readiness. But now since then, um, there's, they've kind of changed the nomenclature. And what what our current ordinance requires is space and conduit to um, do the wiring to install a charger. What council directed us to do is to be truly E V ready so that the conduit and everything is already there, the panel has the capacity. So you could literally just buy a charger and you could plug it in and then you could start charging your vehicle. So, but we need, because we don't know yet how the code exactly how is going to, what it's going to say, we need to look at this, look at the the model code that that regional um, the regional group has developed and and see how we can respond to it and and meet this direction from the council. And it's a similar thing with um, solar readiness and solar P V readiness. Now, we again, we didn't, with solar, I believe that we required an additional amount on the roof um, depending on how big the house was. So that's something we'll have to look at and come back with depending on what the, the new code um, is requiring. And then with solar thermal, um, we did, we required the space for that to be installed. And then with gray water readiness, it's the dual piping. Um, and there were some specific other measures on where it came out, having the space if you wanted to put, you know, a processing system in there. So really the um, the gray water readiness was just that all the piping was installed. Um, if someone did want to have a gray water system, um, because it's so much less expensive to install it um, in new construction than it is to retrofit it.
Okay, but we aren't requiring, see, I think we should require people to put in gray water systems and rainwater capture systems in new construction. But I guess that is a pretty heavy ask.
Well, so I, I, when we took the gray water readiness through, I think it was the sustainability committee, we decided that, you know, not everyone would have the, like if you force people to do gray water, not everyone is going to have the um, a- attention to it that it it requires, but it's there if someone does want to do it or if we get in a position where, you know, we really need to do that. And then with the um, the requirement to have, there is a requirement with a certain amount of turf. If you go over, I think it's five hundred square feet, you either have to have, you have to have a gray water system or a rainwater catchment system to, to install more turf. So there are those, those measures that are already existing in our ordinance.
Okay, so if we wanted to push it, that's a different conversation.
Yes, and I mean, the the tool for that might be the um, the M W low because that more hits um, landscaping. Um.
Okay. Thanks.
John?
Yeah. Hey, Brandy, good to see you.
Hi.
Um, could you describe a little, uh, again, a bit more of the um, your thoughts about replacing the big use of the the, the build it green checklist?
Um, the the thought is that, you know, we didn't, we, the thought is that, again, that it's become so onerous to respond to the code cycle and we're moving more towards all electric and Calgary over the years. You know, when we, when we first had our green building ordinance, I believe it was in two thousand and ten, we didn't have Calgary. And so we were using that to kind of achieve what we think Calgary may achieve or get close to. And so if we were to, you know, have those mandatory measures verified by a third party as well as potentially, you know, requiring tier one and or tier two, perhaps depending on the project type, right? So maybe you would require tier one for eighty years and you would require to tier, tier two for a single family new construction. We don't know yet. We need to look at it. We have really good examples out there of folks who are doing this now. So we want, you know, if the council direct says to, we would go look at those. Um, so the idea too is that if you, with using Calgary tier one and tier two, it, because it's all within the same code, the language within those, those measures in those tiers speaks to the code, whereas when we're trying to fit build it greens checklist, like there, it's not always responding in an apple to apples way or a way that we can, you know, fit with the additional things that we want to implement. Um.
That makes sense. I I, I feel the green checklist has got all kinds of problems for sure. But it looks like you need to um, rely more on rate, on reviewers to actually come in and and do the, do the checking, check the uh, installations proper, that they're done properly and that sort of thing.
Well, what, uh, Jeff, sorry.
I can, I can, I'll answer that. Um, I mean, the green point certification for a, for a new house is pretty, it's a pretty, I mean, it's almost, it's comparable to what you do at Palo Alto now with Calgary, mostly tier two on a new house.
Right.
Um, so I was just gonna add a couple of things here. One is, you know, Calgary has, has by and large, I I'd say it's caught up quite a bit substantially with with build it green in terms of kind of the level of rigor, in terms of the quality of product you're getting uh, by following Calgary, especially if you go to tier one or tier two. Um, and it's just, as Brandy said, the, just the language, it's, it's, it's a lot easier to sort of enforce. And just, I think, you know, builders in particular just understand it better than trying to walk them through everything that goes into a build a green uh, certification. Yeah. Um, yeah, and it's just, I mean, it's the standard of the peninsula, you know, Palo Alto sort of does this tier two uh, enforcement with a lot of documentation and third parties. And then a lot of this, a lot of the peninsula is doing what Los Altos, for example, does, which is a mandatory only. Uh, but it has to be signed off and verified during construction by someone who's, it can be a green point raider. It can be an I C C Calgary inspector or a a lead A P, a lead uh, residential A P. So it's, this would put us in line with a lot of the rest of the peninsula. I think it would actually be easier to enforce, but it would still have a third party. And I think it still gets you a good product in terms of of what you get at the end of, you know, what, at the end of a project.
Right, yeah, my, my biggest concern, I think, is that uh, the, the reliance on raiders ends up adding considerable amount of cost to a, to a project. And if there's a way we can streamline that so it doesn't become too much of a burden, it'd be a good thing to look at.
It's, it's, it's a few thousand dollars on a typical, like on a, on a big project.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
The other.
Quick, yeah, Brandy, hi, how are you? Um, if I'm remembering it correctly from when we did our project, was the build it green, is it a point system? And you have, you have um, flexibility of which things that you're going to do in order to hit your minimum points required. Okay, so if that's the case, then is that change, like when we would go to this with uh, with Calgary tier one, tier two, do, is there flexibility to the homeowner, which things they're going to pick and choose from? Or is this more code compliance that they actually have to do, you know, all ten items or what have you? And I guess related to that is, is this easier or harder for a homeowner relative to build it green?
Brandy, you don't need to answer that? You're muted.
Yes, please, apologies.
Yeah, so um, so with Calgary, um, if you go to tier two, uh, typically there is flexibility. There's a, so there's, Calgary has mandatory tier one and tier two. And uh, so, you know, for a, using Palo Alto as an example. So if you have a, if you have a new house in Palo Alto, there's a, a, you know, a set of probably thirty or forty mandatory measures over five different categories. And then Palo Alto ends up asking you to choose about ten electives. Um, and so for each, you know, within each category, there you choose three or four measures out of roughly a dozen. So there is flexibility. Uh, it doesn't have the point system. My build a green was trying to sort of create this point system to to give you some measure of the impact. I mean, with with the count, with with this Calgary enforcement, there's no point system anymore. But it is, there is flexibility. You can sort of pick and choose things based on how, either what, you know, a homeowner really is interested in or on what has kind of the lowest impact on the project.
And um, Sarah, as far as the, the um, is, is it easier for the homeowner? I think, I mean, I'll let Jeff respond to this as well, but I think it would be easier because there'd be more familiarity with it in the industry. And so, and.
I think I, I'd say it's a little more straightforward. Um, partly because, you know, the green point checklist, well, two things. One, you, you know, you sort of go through and you pick specific measures. Um, partly because, you know, the Green Point checklist, well, two things. One, you, you know, you sort of go through and you pick specific measures. And when you're a raider, you you target, you know, you, if you have to achieve 120 points, you target like 130, 140, and so you're out there trying to explain to someone, you really want to hit this measure, but if you don't, we've got other points. I mean, it gets really complicated to, 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 it's complicated in the field to sort of explain that you have to measure these things, but but you can miss a few here and there. Um, with with this, with the CalGreen, there's a list of things you've committed to doing and you do them. And so it does make, I I think, I, I think from a raider's perspective, it makes it, it makes it um simpler. From a builder's perspective, I think it makes it clearer. And from the homeowner's perspective, I would say that they, they're probably comparable in terms of the sort of cost and and labor they add to the, to the, the overall, just the product, project itself. I think, I don't think there's, I don't think one is more expensive to comply with than the other. Um, you know, the homeowner, I think, just wants the thing to sort of move forward, not have to worry too much about it. I'd say CalGreen is probably a little less stressful from the homeowner's perspective.
Thank you. No other questions? Sorry.
And I'll just, I mean, I'll just say full disclosure, my day job, I am a Green Point Raider, I'm also a Calgary Inspector, so I I I enforce, I I verify Build It Green building codes throughout the peninsula, including a handful of projects here in town, so.
Um, Brandy, I have a question. You had us uh something on there about um adopting changes for multifamily stuff. And as we know, uh, we're working through our housing element update, uh, we're likely to have at least some amount of multifamily housing in Portola Valley over the next eight years. Um, so have you thought at all about what that means in terms of, for example, EV chargers? If you have multifamily housing on one lot, let's say hypothetically, 50-unit building next to Ford Field, have we thought about what we would like some, you know, something like that to do? It's just not the kind of project we've ever really thought about in Portola Valley before.
Um, you know, we don't, oh, sorry, Jeff, did you wanna?
Go ahead, go ahead, I'll follow up.
Um, what I was gonna say is, we, you know, we, we didn't even have multifamily in our ordinance in the last go, but I think that we have really good um examples that we can draw from regionally to kind of figure out what the opportunities are there and bring them to the council. Um, Jeff, did you want to add?
I'll just add that I I believe the new CalGreen, well, the Calgary, new Calgary will have more uh more guidance and and requirements in terms of EV charging in multifamily buildings. It's been a big area of focus. Uh, I mean, Peninsula Clean Energy has spent a lot of time uh putting in resource, trying to basically get more EV chargers installed in apartment buildings, particularly rental, uh multifamily rental buildings, because that is a huge shortfall. Uh, people who want to buy an EV but are renting an apartment have a hard time finding a charger, and that's, it's a huge gap. But I think the new Calgary will have, and for new construction, um, we should absolutely be looking at what Calgary puts out and make sure that we've got something that will, will put EV chargers in a multifamily uh project anywhere in town.
Yeah, and I I think that there's, you know, there's, there's a bunch of different ways you can do that. It doesn't necessarily 100% of the parking. It could be shared spaces, there could be some, you know, provision for infrastructure, so you can do load balancing or whatever people might need to do, but it is, does seem like it's something we should think about, because getting it in when the thing is constructed, as opposed to trying to retrofit it later, is gonna be a big one.
I'd say the key things are sizing the electrical service so that you can accommodate a lot of chargers, and also, I think, running the wiring so that you can, you know, as we said before, you could plug them in just like in a house.
Yep. Mary Ann?
At one of my county committees, Resource Management Climate Protection, we have had at least two times some people from um an organization that that does electrification of multifamily buildings of very low and low income. So it might be helpful to talk to them. If you want, I can get you that info.
That would be great. Thank you, Mary Ann.
Okay, uh, if there are no more council questions, I will go to public comments, and I see David Cardinal has his hand up.
Uh, sure, I have a question about the, the whole EV charging notion. It's great for us. Uh, but EVs are not the most affordable things, and if we're going to do uh below-market rate housing and multi-unit housing, maybe a better approach could be asking people to put in some kind of van or mass transit to get people in and out rather than just encouraging, get more fairly expensive cars with large batteries as much as we may all love them. So just a a comment, thanks.
Thank you, David. Um, Carolyn has her hand up. Go ahead, Carolyn.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Alves, for um, I mean, um, clarifying or actually sharing your expertise in the Green Point um and then disclosing that you are in fact a Green Point reader was one of my questions. But um, you refer Palo Alto. I was hoping that you could give more specifics to help the residents in Portola Valley. Can you please comment and and see how, what programs you're going to use to help uh Portola Valley residents with the, uh, with that new CalGreen system and um all the housing? I assume that all the affordable housing will be exempt? Or um, I hope you can give us a little more positive news. Thank you.
Uh, do you want me to respond to that now, or?
If you'd like to, or we can continue and get all the comments and.
Well, sure. Um, I mean, in terms of programs, you know, I think we're, we're thinking about probably something, I mean, I I bring up Palo Alto as an example of one of the, by far, the most rigorous um Calgary enforcement regime on the peninsula. I'm not sure we need to go quite that far. I would probably lean more towards the Los Altos as an example of a, of of how a building department is running a CalGreen verification program. Um, maybe we split the difference and and we're not quite as 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 strict as Palo Alto, but we do require some tier one and tier two measures. Um, I think as we move forward with this ordinance, we we will probably dig into those details and more, more. Um, and I'm sorry, there was a second part of the question. Oh, um, no, I I, below-market rate housing is not exempt. It absolutely complies with CalGreen. Uh, I, some jurisdictions, like, you know, I actually don't know, I don't work on below-market rate or multifamily very often, so I don't know if there are provisions in terms of of making compliance easier or more affordable, but uh below-market rate developers do in fact have to follow CalGreen. And 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 it's, it's actually really important that you, large multifamily projects be built sustainably, so we would, anything we do would absolutely apply to the below-market rate. Uh, it can be done in a way that does not significantly increase the expense of the construction. It's, it's definitely, it's, it's very much affordable.
Thanks, Eric. Uh, next hand up is Karen.
Yeah, um, I want to support what Jeff said, Jeff just said, and disagree with David Cardinal's um statement about EV and low, you know, and the affordable housing, because there are plenty of used or very low um, low-range uh vehicles that, especially in a, at a family where you have multiple cars, that you could have a gas car and you could have an ice car. And in, you know, 20 to 30 years, everybody's gonna be driving um electric vehicles. So it'd be a travesty if we don't put in the infrastructure in these units. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think to add to that, by 2035, you will not be able to buy a gasoline car in California anymore. And so I think it is important to prepare for that. Um, I see no more hands raised from the public, so I will bring it back to the council then for discussion. Jeff?
I'll just add to that. I I I absolutely, I love the idea of more, more mass transit or transit options for affordable housing we build in town, but I agree that there will be, people will still have cars, um, and and we want them to be EVs going forward, so we absolutely have to provide the infrastructure along with options to drive them as little as possible, so.
Um, any other council comments or Brandy, um, are there specific things that you need from us now? Um, I know you said that you're planning on having a council work session later in the summer, but uh ahead of that, other than what you've heard tonight, is there more that you need from us?
No, um, the only thing is just confirmation that you're supportive of this direction in, in eliminating the reliance on the Build It Green, Green Point Rated checklist and moving more towards CalGreen.
John, are you raising your hand to say something or?
That's a hand, um, I I just wanted to say, thank, thank Brandy for uh for the presentation. It's uh good to see things moving forward here, and I definitely would love to get away from the Build It Green. I I, that that has been a pretty messy system all along. Um, so, great, good, good progress, and I look forward to having a meeting later on in the year and getting it ironed out a bit more.
Excellent. Thank you, John.
I hope I've, I hope I've made clear that I'm pretty comfortable with moving in this other direction as well, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I I think I am too. I think uh Build It Green served us when there was no alternative uh better than the lack of alternative would have served us. And now that we have better choices, we can start becoming more mainstream.
Wonderful. Thank you. I will come back and see you um later this summer.
Great, thank you very much, Brandy.
Have a good evening.
Good evening. Okay, and that brings us to item seven, Council Liaison Committee Regional Agencies Reports. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first.
Sarah?
Um, since we last met, there have been two housing um element meetings. One was a meeting of the committee on May 2nd, and the other was uh just this past Monday, which was a community meeting. Um, the May 2nd Housing Element uh Committee meeting, um, we had about 80, a little over 80 attendees, and the meeting went five hours, and we had a very deep and thorough discussion on the eight ideas um that Laura and her team have been um, you know, working on for the last several months. And um, as an outcome of that, we, as a committee, came up with um a list of sites. Um, right now, the sites include, I think it's like 172 units. Um, our goal is to ultimately um get to 137. So we have whittle room and options within um the list that we have right now. And um Laura and her team are vetting out some uh questions with respect to, you know, the remaining set of sites, and um my understanding is gonna come back to the committee at our next meeting on um May 24th. So for people in the community that have been following it, that would be a really another great meeting to attend. It's most likely the last one where the, the committee will be discussing the sites, and I suspect that we will um whittle down a bit from, from that number that we're at right now. Um, the biggest piece of news, I would say, um, well, depends, I guess, a, a, a big piece of news that really anchors the program is the fact that we're able to use Ford Field, um, which is a town-owned site, not the baseball diamond, but the field behind it or beside it. So no, no changes to the field or the parking beside the field at this, um, so it's, it's the uh property, it's the land on the other side of it, um, to do an affordable housing project there. Um, per the advice that we have been given from a variety of uh nonprofit affordable housing developers, that it's very difficult to do these problem, projects under 50 units um because of the economies and how it pencils out from a financial feasibility standpoint. And so um the plans that were proposed from uh staff at the five, at the May 2nd meeting went into detail about how that's possible at that site. Um, and so it really is, um, you know, a, a unique opportunity to really um create um non-profit or low and very low-income housing here in Portola Valley and really um meet the, the essence or the intent of what Rena is in our community um to diversify housing. And it has been consistently a voiced as a priority of the committee and a lot of um people from the community who've been on the call, so. Um, so I think that, that's a very positive thing that anchors our ability to do a lot of the other things that are on that list. And so for people that want more information, I strongly recommend you go to the Housing Element website. There's a pretty thorough um meeting summary document that lists out. Um, there's two tables on, in it, and the second table lists out the sites and um the, the table before that kind of explains the process as to how we got there. Um, so that's that. And then the community meeting, um, it's really mostly breakout rooms. That was attended by over 100 people. It was just over an hour and a half. Um, the breakout rooms were facilitated by our consultant, um, earning, uh, urban planning partners. And um, I think we got some good feedback, and a lot of that feedback is also what Laura is gonna be looking into between now and the meeting on um May 24th. And um, that's about it on that. The only other thing that I had is we had a nice luncheon. Jeremy um had set up, thank you, Jeremy, with the uh staff and leadership at uh Portola Valley School District the other day. So it was nice to get together um and have that monthly meeting in person and have some normalcy. So it's good. That's about it. The construction projects are moving along well there, and um uh, it sounds like one is 40%. I think it's uh Ormondale, that's, or I'll, I'll probably butcher this. Once, one property is 40% done, the other one is 60% done. And it sounds like I think both will be done at some point in the, in the fall to winter, so, well. So, that's it.
Okay. Next. John?
Yes, well, I had a meeting last night, the uh, well, with Mary Ann at the uh Race and Equity Committee meeting. It was um as usual, a very interesting gathering, uh mostly, let's see, discussion of um possible change of their time of meeting, moving it early in the evening. Um, we had a report from Andrew on the Housing Element Meetings, and uh he might have, Sarah was just discussing, uh, Lucy was talking about her, their Town Seal Project, which is really primarily intended to be a method of getting people to talk and learn how to talk together on difficult subjects. Take it into the community and and get, give people practice on doing what we're all getting used to doing anyway. Um, see, they're talking about putting together a yearly calendar with um pointing out significant dates during the year that uh relate to race and equity. Um, some discussion on how that's gonna come together, that has not been ironed out yet. And um talking about uh supporting the monthly demonstration at the corner of Portola and Alpine that is still being supported by a few hardy souls. Um, they're going to have a special um event on the anniversary of George Floyd, George Floyd murder um on May 25th. And uh we'll probably be putting out some more information about that to coming up. Let's see. Brief discussion about whether or not to change the size of the committee to make uh make it easier to have a quorum. Not sure that that's actually applicable in this case, but it may be, and um that was about it. Mary Ann, you probably want to fill in what I've left off. That was it.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Jeff?
Yeah, so I was part of the uh, the Housing Element Meetings uh that Sarah described. Uh, I'll just, I'll just say again, uh, you know, we, two or three meetings back, we discussed sort of how, how the sites inventory kind of blew up in the, the March meeting. And I just wanted to say that the staff really did a remarkable job in vetting out those, those eight ideas that were thrown at them. Um, you know, we, we put, you know, we, the council put resources behind them, but they've really put the work in along with urban planning partners and got us uh, kept us, kept us on track. And I think we're, I think we're actually, I think we have something that really took a lot of the public comments and and incorporated them as best we could. I I'm actually pretty pleasantly surprised at how far we were able to go in terms of meeting concerns from the community. Um, you know, I think we have something that, that a lot of people will, will, that I hope people recognize that, that they might not be happy with the outcome, but that it's, we did in fact sort of spread things out as best we could, so that a lot of people, it's a compromise. People will walk away and everyone will see that something, nobody got everything they wanted, and that's probably the best we can ask for. Um, but again, I, I thought the staff's work was, was particularly, um, was just, was, was stellar. I, uh, my other meeting, I attended geologic safety this morning, uh, where they basically reviewed the uh, the safety element. Um, they reviewed some draft memos regarding the, the geologic, geologic safety aspects of the safety element, and so we got some feedback from them. And that process will continue forward. Um, that's about, uh, that's, I don't need to go into a whole lot of detail there, but uh, that's. And that process will continue forward. That's about, that's, I don't need to go into a whole lot of detail there, but that's all I have.
Okay, thanks.
Marianne, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Oh, sorry, I'm not speaking into. I was at the lunch with Sarah and Jeremy and Howard in the school district. On, when was that? Couple days ago. And I was at the race and equity committee virtually last night and I wanted to fill in a few things. So regarding the, their big project, the town seal, they've decided to adjust the timeline. And wrap it up in a year. They wanted to have enough time, you know. I thought that was kind, and and part of the reason was one's dealing with teenagers, I think in high school. And one's dealing with a toddler and a newborn. And I get that. I get that. So what they want to do with the town seal is they want to focus on the messaging, the kind of language that they're using. So that you can talk about a very polarizing subject without polarizing people. And they want to connect with a lot of groups like sequoias, the schools, church groups. So if anybody has any ideas of groups that would be suitable, let me or John know and we'll pass that on. The calendar had a ton of stuff on it. It was mostly African American events, really hideous, shocking, horrible things. That is our American history. So I think they said, great start, but let's, you know, let's think about it. Let's perhaps, one person in the audience had a great idea, what about the Voting Rights Act? What about, you know, interracial marriage that day? So they're they're going, it's a work in progress. They're going to keep working on it. And then there was, there's a woman who's been coming to the meetings, Andy Mara. I don't know if you know her. She's married to Steve. Perhaps more people know Steve. And she is one of the hardy souls who's been on the corner at the demonstration all these years. And so she was there to say, we would really like to connect more with the committee. We would like committee to know what we're doing. We would like. To know what the committee's doing. And she was, it would like to invite us and others to be a part of the demonstration. And you said, May twenty five, that is the actual Floyd murder date. But I have down here that they were encouraging people to go to the demonstration on Sunday, May twenty-two from eleven to twelve. With the discussion after, so I'm not really sure.
I think you're right. Yeah, I think.
Okay, so because because the twenty-fifth is right on the edge of the Memorial Day weekend, I think that's going to be tough. So I think they're aiming for May twenty-second. So those were just a few other things. And then the Planning Commission on May fourth. Saw the draft EIR for the Stanford project. There was a lot of upfront. Explanations by Laura and the and our consultant Rebecca Ald from. Zenit Lamb Fear Gregory about what an EI, about SEQA, about what an EIR is. What an EIR isn't, what sort of questions are appropriate, what sort of questions aren't. And I think that helped to kind of focus the questions. The commissioners had a lot of. Definition questions like, what do you mean when you say, when you say significant? What do you mean when you say if feasible? And they and they had some technical questions, like if someone had an objection to a specific in the EIR, how would that be addressed? They, there were comments about, this is the commissioners. About transportation, what about the Marguerite shuttle? Is that in the traffic study? No, it isn't. Had, did you model for the night? There will be thirty-nine units. There will be light spill. Perhaps that would have been a good idea. I don't think they did model for the light. There were questions that were more about impact, about aesthetic impact rather than impact on the environment. And an EIR is about impact on the environment. Oh, there were some questions about the trees that are going to be removed. One was about when you do a lot of tree canopy thinning, then the light comes in and and other things grow. I think she might have been referring to invasive weeds because that totally happens. And what are you going to do about that? And then just, there are a lot of trees that are going to be removed. So then the public had, there was one really interesting comment by David Smirnoff. I don't know if you people know him. He lives up Los Trancos. And he had, he said that there's no discussion of climate change. And wildfire is driven by climate change. So to mitigate wildfire, you need to address climate change. And he was, he wants to. Do carbon soil sequestration. He says that the university, Portola Valley, the county should all be incorporating that into all development. Did he, did, he sent that letter to me? Did he send it to all the council? I'll send it to you guys. Anyway, it was super interesting and Craig Taylor definitely thought it was a good suggestion. Then there were comments about the. Geology. And. Was there Maldling Den for evacuation traffic? Who can live in the homes, you know, that we get that one a lot, not not the below market rate, the homes, the twenty-seven homes. And that's Stanford faculty and staff. Okay. So there were not, oh, another one. What is, what does significant mean? Okay, so that was pretty much it. It was. Was a much, the tone of the meeting was not what I would have expected. Alrighty. Well done.
Okay, I have, let's see. I had a BPTS meeting that was canceled for lack of quorum. And it turns out that in fact. There are not enough members appointed to the BPTS for them to have a quorum. So I will be bringing to our next meeting a charter amendment similar to what we did for wildfire preparedness. I think their, their authorized number of seats is eleven or thirteen or some huge number. Because at some point, they had a lot of people who were interested, so we raised the limit, but we never lowered it back down again. So. We need to lower back down again, like we need.
What do they want to lower the number to? Seven or nine?
So that one was canceled. Wildfire Protection also canceled because another member resigned from that one. We've had two applications though for that, so I'm reviewing those and hopefully some appointments will be also on the agenda for next time. But that's a reminder to all the rest of you for the committees that you are liaisons to, to look at their charter, see how many are authorized. How many are currently appointed and whether anything is definitely on any of your committees. So. You take a look at those, that'd be helpful. And let's see, I have two other things. One is. Go share my screen here. So I've created this website. A number of people have been asking how they can see who is attending these webinar meetings that we have. So I created something that uses the Zoom API to pull data from any Portola Valley webinar meeting. And display it. And it allows you to see not just the counts that we've been manually updating. From time to time in our meetings, but actually who is in the meetings, when they leave, when they arrive and so on. So if anybody would like to take a look at that site, give me any feedback. I would consider it kind of beta-ish for now. I don't think it has a whole lot of bugs. It seems to be working pretty well. But if you, if you go there, you take a look and you have any feedback for me, just email me and I can. Hopefully make it better. And then the other thing I want to share also is. Certainly. It'll work. It'll show you who's in this meeting right now. I can certainly do that. Let me see. Yeah, let me see, where did I put my?
I'm a big fan.
Right here, but why is this browser window not showing up in my?
Can you share the link one more time? I was typing it as you took, as you took it down.
Sure, let me share the link. That is the link. And I don't know why it won't let me share. Browser to actually show people what it looks like. So let me. Stop sharing that. Share screen.
Craig, if you'd like me to.
I got it. There we go. So here it is. Zoom that a little bit. So it shows you all of the meetings at which there have been people attending for up to the last seven days. So older meetings will cycle out of here just to keep it a little tidy. Here is our current council meeting. If I click on that, it will take me. And then it shows me who all the people are that are online and who all the people are who had been previously online during this meeting who's left by now. So should work reasonably well on phones as well as on devices. I made it so everything should resize itself and flow nicely and all that kind of stuff. But anyway, if you, and on the summary page here, you can see it's a fifteen that it thinks there are fifteen people in the meeting right now, which. Nine panelists and six attendees. Seems to have matched pretty well. There are a couple of little things that, just to do with the Zoom API that I don't have any control of. For example, you might see people on here multiple times, like David Cardinal is down here. And he's also as somebody who left the meeting is also up here as someone who joined the meeting. That's just because Zoom reported those as two different people, even though it's the same person. Same thing with the Blue Sky Timer. Which is our three-minute counter. That's not a real person, but it shows up as a user in the meeting. So there are a couple of things like that that. Make it off by a handful, but roughly the the total number of people and the current number of people is is roughly correct.
It's great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And. Those were all the meetings that I have and all the information I had to share this week. So I will go for. Public, oh, no, sorry, there was one more. I have one more, which the. Members of the wildfire preparedness committee who have been trying to. Put together the wildfire, have been putting together the wildfire preparedness meeting for this coming. Weekend on Saturday. It is Saturday at ten AM, I believe it starts. So yeah, ten AM to two PM at the town center. And they have organized a lot of people, a lot of different vendors, a lot of experts to come and talk about all kinds of different stuff. At least twelve exhibits inside the community hall. And then they have a bunch of demos and other things going on outside as well. So highly recommended to come and see everything that you can do to. Clean up your yard, harden your home, equipment, home hardening stuff. Landscape management, you name it, they've got all kinds of stuff. They've got an outdoor like sprinkler system for fire suppression on the outside of your house. Something, a lot of cool stuff. So worth stopping by. A lot of tons of work. From them and and support and stuff, so.
Can we recognize the people who did this fair? Who are they? I know Jennifer Hammer is. And MJ have done it, yeah. Well, they really need to be acknowledged.
Yeah, and and they they have been and they continue to be. Okay. Share and go to public comments on this agenda item. And I see Dave Cardinal and David.
Hi, first, I think your app's great, especially since I apparently now get two votes in every election, which I'm really happy about. I mostly wanted to echo or amplify Jeff's comments about the staff reports in the Housing Element Committee. I was frankly blown away by how mature, how good they were as far as taking all this turbulent input. And coming up with, here's what we can get from each proposal and here's what's likely, here's what's not likely. I thought that was brilliant work. And then tangentially, I may keep beating this drum. The more we can do, I think, to encourage other modes of transportation besides cars, the better. So it's great that we want to hold people's feet to the fire to put in EV charging stations. But if we have an opportunity to get people like Stanford to run shuttles around the town or elsewhere. That's a much quicker solution. And could be much more beneficial in the long run than just more cars. So I I hope we keep, you know, pounding on that as well as the whole EV thing. Thanks.
Thank you, David. And the next hand, looks like it is Carolyn again. Go ahead, Carolyn.
Thank you. Now I understand how to follow, be patient and follow the prompts. Thank you for taking my comments. First of all, I really appreciate that you will honor the efforts of MJB and Jennifer Hammer. They have done an extraordinary job in this community. And I hope Town Council Silver is still on the call. Because the issue about significant or non-significant was never addressed. I mean, yes, we we asked the question, but it, there was no solution. So what, do I follow the the explanation on the dictionary? Or what? Because we are supposed to submit our comments by this Friday. And we have no guidance on on this particular issue. So I hope I receive an answer tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see no more hands raised, so we can move on to the town manager report. Item eight, Jeremy.
Thank you, Mayor Hughes, members of the council. A little repetitive maybe from a few things, but I think there are a few things worth repeating. First of all, the EIR for the Stanford Wedge comment period closes this Friday. So we hope as many people as possible participate in that process and provide comments. I am going to be having a meeting with the general manager of West Bay Sanitary District in the coming weeks. To discuss what I understand is, if you remember last summer, the. The district was contemplating changing the current reimbursement process for the construction of sewers in town. I understand that that, they they didn't take any action last year, but I understand that they may be coming back. So I'm eager to learn more about what they plan to do, both for current reimbursement agreements and what future. Agreement may look like. I understand that they they may be phasing the reimbursement agreements out, but more to come. And I will be asking the GM to make a presentation at the appropriate time to the council. So the public can have more information about what they're deciding to do. The evacuation study is coming close to completion. I have to commend Bob Grandy and his team for some exceptional work. I've had a couple of opportunities to see some drafts. And I think residents will be very pleased with the thoroughness of that report. Both in timing under different scenarios, but also potential mitigation measures in order to reduce evacuation times. We're anticipating that that will come to council on the July thirteenth agenda. And it will likely be in front of the Emergency Preparedness Committee before that. Wanted to give a couple wildfire related updates. Again, I want to repeat how, like what everyone's saying tonight, the great work of Jennifer and MJ on on Saturday's fair. It is incredible the amount of resource that they brought in and we hope that everyone can come and find what's best for their own properties. Jasper Ridge for the last few weeks has had a goat and sheep herd out. Jasper Ridge for the last few weeks has had a goat and sheep herd out. Out of the Apache Gate doing some mitigation work, they just moved over to the Escobar Gate where they anticipate being out there for another month or so. So that's good work there, I understand the ranch is doing a variety of mitigation work on their properties. And MOSD is conducting some work in the parking lot, adjacent to the parking lot at Windy Hill, so people will see some changes there as well. This is mostly to reduce ladder fuels, shaded fuel, create shaded fuel breaks and like. I had a presentation, I joined a presentation from Stanford University today where I got to meet. The new vice president for. What's her title, the new Jean McCown, her name's Kelly Klein, she works on all of the external outreach. But I heard from them on the work that they've been doing over the last year across all of their properties, I asked them to put together a one or two page report. That can be provided to the public here, and they are happy to come make a presentation a little bit later, probably. Early summer to the council on all the work that they're doing, not just to Jasper Ridge, but in all the properties, Web Ranch, Cat Tunnel, Felt Lake. And, and other environs that are certainly important to us. The final thing I had, just to do a quick share of my screen, the Parks and Rec Committee recently. Supported a state grant proposal that we, a, a grant proposal we made to state parks regarding. Potential future bathrooms at Ford Field, something that we have been working at the staff level when it came to us actually from. Our friends at Alpine Little League. Is if we can't do a permanent structure, this is something that we're actually considering, this is a. Like I've talked to the facilities folks at Sacred Heart about a bathroom.
Jeremy, we're seeing your calendar.
Oh, lucky you guys, hold on. Let's try that again. Desktop two, sorry about that. Here it is, so a small portable facility, but much nicer than what we have right now, this is some. We're going to include some money in next year's budget, this runs about fifty thousand dollars. And not to count chickens before they hatch, but it sounds like our friends at Little League are happy to participate in the purchase of something. So really appreciate their initiative. And the engagement that we've had from the Little League President, Vice President over the last six months on a variety of issues, including if you recall. The work that they did at the batting cages, it looks absolutely beautiful. With that, that concludes my report, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy, is there any public comment on item eight? Seeing none, we'll move on to nine, and nine A is the digest from April twenty eighth. And from April twenty eighth digest. Public comment on item nine? Nope, seeing none, item ten, we're going to have a closed session today. To discuss public employee performance review evaluation for the town attorney and. The town attorney contract is expiring at the end of this fiscal year, so we need to renew it or find a new town attorney. I unfortunately screwed up the scheduling with Marcy, who I've asked to help us do some work to do that evaluation. And so we will be postponing that closed session to a future meeting, Jeremy, I see your hands up. You're muted.
If, if I may, there was one item that I neglected to mention, on May twenty fifth, Mid Peninsula Regional Open, Regional Open Space District. Will be making a presentation to the town council on a future Hawthards Open Space Preserve property. We encourage everyone to come to that meeting, we'll be doing some more outreach, but I've certainly been in contact with a variety of. Interested groups in town already to let them know that this meeting is coming up, thanks, sorry about that.
Thank you, so back to item ten, we'll be postponing that to a future meeting, but if there is any public comment on that item, we can take it now.
Move to adjourn, move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Sarah seconded. All in favor? All right, we are adjourned, thank you all, and good night.
Night, everyone.
Good night. Greg, that's our fastest meeting ever.